... which I now call to order. If we will rise, Dan, please offer the prayer.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you again for this day. We thank you for our community that we live in. We thank you for the joy it is to be in a community like this in small-town America that's been a home to a lot of us for a lot of decades, and we just thank you for that. We thank you for our first responders, our firemen, and our EMS people and our police force, and ask for protection on their lives in the continuing days as we continue to see a world that is not quite as conducive to law and order as they once were. So we just thank you. We just thank you for this opportunity this evening to discuss another measure of business for the town of Mont Eagle, as that you've got our minds and hearts and caused us to be able to work things out and be able to find a reasonable solution to the things that are challenging. So we just commit these things to you now in our Savior's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of our nation's life. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and your true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Diana, Jessica here. Dan.
Here.
Here.
Here. You have the minutes as submitted. I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as submitted? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Citizens' comments? I would remind you of the three-minute law, a rule, and that way everyone can speak once. If there's another go-around, we can do a second round, but everyone should speak once if they want. Dean?
I think it's very important for us to look at what has taken place in the last three, four months, tonight, for instance, and according to Google, capitalism in a capitalistic economy, private individuals and companies own the means of production and the right to profit from them. The economy is based on a free market of supply and demand, and the government is not involved. But yet you're going to tell convenience stores they've got to be open 24/7. You're going to limit how big their store is. It's just more and more control on the local level, the likes of which we have never seen in this town, nor is it in any adjoining town that I'm aware of. And it's just more and more and more and more until sooner or later, you know, this is not, we're not free. And you guys are looking at choking us out for, I don't know for what reason, but I would encourage us to let competition set the market, and if you're going to limit convenience stores or funeral homes or whatever, you know, think about what you're doing. Are you going to limit lawyers? Are you going to make, you know, I think you should really truly order passing ordinance and make NACI stay open on Saturday and Sunday so we'll have somewhere to eat? Is that next? Food court trailer things, you know, some people don't like them, but that's a sign of the times. Are you going to outlaw them? You going to run them out of town? You know, I think we need to, we need to remember we're supposed to be innovative, and if you have a good idea and you want to try it, City Hall doesn't choke you to death. And you're choking us to death. And we're not, you're not going to have Mayberry. You're going to have Russia. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make citizen comments?
I'm, I'm Mayberry. Our church several weeks ago had a cleanup Main Street, and we had to expand our area because our town employees have done a wonderful job of keeping Main Street clean. And I just want that noticed, and I'd like them to be told that we appreciate what they're doing.
Any other citizen wish to be heard? Pardon?
Most of y'all know who I am. I'm Rodney Kilgore. I just want to take a minute to say, since the city have voted, voted not to accept the resolution on 7/24 in July, and revoted on the same resolution again in August, it has left me with no choice but to move forward with a lawsuit against the city. Appreciate your time tonight and look forward to developing future business in this town of Mont Eagle. These two members, or three members on this board tonight, has got this town in a lot of trouble. I have begged them for a year, a couple years, and y'all just keep on, and I seen tonight, I walked into a thing before this meeting, y'all still trying to do it to other people. You can't, y'all running other people out besides me, but, I mean, y'all ain't going to run me off, but y'all have been sued, and that's the reason y'all's attorney ain't here tonight. If I had attorney and he wasn't here tonight, I'd get rid of him because he knew this was going on. It was electronically filed on Thursday, and he should be in here tonight, sitting right over there looking at me. So y'all just have to...
As you know, excuse me, thank you, but as you know, there's no discussion because it seems to be a pending lawsuit.
I know.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wish to be heard at this time? Under citizen comments?
Hi, I'm Lucy Keeble, and I didn't have anything prepared, but I wasn't really prepared for the challenges that you all have been given. And I think that there's not a real town or city or village worth its salt that doesn't have guidelines and guardrails and zoning ordinances and building permit ordinances and all the rest. And I think that when we look at what Mont Eagle is and look at the parts of Mont Eagle that work, that are sustainable, that are attractive, there's, there's a lot of that, and there's also a lot that's not. And if you just make it where any person with money can come in and do whatever they want without guidelines, then you're going to create a town that's not going to be very attractive and it's not going to draw people. So I disagree. I don't think that Mayberry lets anybody do anything that they want to in the town without consideration of residents and visitors and business owners. So I think it's really important that we work together, and I'm not saying that there has to be a restriction on everything, but restrictions can always be modified, and we're talking about them tonight, we talked about them in the earlier meeting. So I think that if we don't have any guardrails, guardrails and guidelines, that we are really asking for Mont Eagle to enter into a depressive situation. We've got lots of promising developments coming, and I think that the more we care and take care of our town and our citizens, the better those coming, the better options we'll continue to present. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Thank you. Then we'll continue with the meeting. We are constantly trying to improve our audiovisual presentations. We hope the TV screen is beneficial to your viewing, but a thank you to Ivy Michelle for donating your time and talent in broadcasting and recording the Imagine Mont Eagle Town Hall meeting. I appreciate that donation contribution that you've made. I've received several comments, and they wanted me to pass on that, how important that was to do. I also want to thank the folks at Bear Hollow. This is really a wonderful place with kitchen, stage, and roominess. We had our rescheduled Labor Day street dance there, and it was a good show with Shane Worley and his company. The reason we, if we had planned to have it outside again as a street dance, Mother Nature did not cooperate again, so we're thinking next year maybe we just have it inside, and if the weather's good, you can walk in and out. But to keep postponing it or trying to reach you all to say it was postponed was a challenge over Labor Day weekend. So as you know, weather, as we've discussed, is a constant challenge. I want to talk for a moment about water. We have a town drought plan, a town drought plan, which calls for certain actions when the lake reaches certain levels. At appropriate times, I may close the rest areas in cooperation with T-Doc. As needed, we buy water from Tracy City. I am developing a water plan with Swanee. You might have noticed that SUD is having a special call meeting to help develop such a plan. Drawing a certain amount from Cooley's Drift Lake is a help for which we thank them. I have also visited SRM Sand Plant. While sometimes they may have enough water to help us, this severe drought has them using their secondary source. These steps have been reviewed by daily phone calls with T-Deck. However, providing water and sewer services is not without challenge. Tracy had to cut us back twice for their own repairs. And finally, we are repairing or replacing our water lines as needed. They are nearing the end of their useful life. The city charter, I think, was 1966 or whatever, so we're pushing, what, 50-plus years. Also, there are repairs needed to our water and sewer plants. We will try to keep you informed via website, Facebook, and what we call Master Blast, which is the emails that hopefully you've signed up for. All this has led the alderman and I to authorize a rate study for the current water and sewer rates. I hope to present the results at the October meeting. What all that means is, yes, we had a drought, there was service interruption, we tried to get the word out, and that's fine, but due to the age of the plants and the pipes and what we can serve and what areas we can serve, it has been a real challenge. So we continue to work through it. As a matter of fact, at this time, since I had to make a decision on an emergency, which is a pump for sewerage to go to the plant, I ask that I will accept a motion that we ratify the emergency pump repair at Waffle House. And Waffle House has that lift station, which happens to be our main lift station. So that was done on September 5th, 2024, at a cost of $14,541. I spoke to our attorney, I spoke to our engineer. There was no choice. We're running on one pump. If that goes, we have major sewage problems. So I'll accept a motion from an alderman to ratify that emergency action.
I move to ratify the emergency repair of the sewer pump lift station at a cost of...
$14,541. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for that. And that's the problem with being day-to-day operations. Something comes up, if it's critical enough, we have to decide. We don't have time to advertise a special call meeting. We can't violate the Sunshine Laws where we make decisions without minutes and presentation and public awareness. So every now and then, an emergency will come up, and sewer plants and sewage seems to be an emergency, in my opinion. So that's why I did it, and I thank the alderman for that support. Calendar of events, the regular, the planning commission will meet tomorrow, the first Tuesday of October. Our mayor and alderman meeting, as usual, will be the last Monday in October, 5 o'clock on both meetings. And that's all I have for calendar events. As to the committee's, Police Department?
Thank you, guys. Townspeople, board. I just got a few things tonight. I'm going to go over the, the actual reports. So I don't, are you going to...
I don't think I have any.
Okay, I got you. So I'll just run down the list here. We've had one DUI from the 15th of last month. So this is August 15th to the 15th of this month, okay? One DUI, two domestic assaults, four reckless driving, three drug-related cases, one of which was an overdose, but the individual survived due to Narcan. I'll come back to the theft here in just a moment. We've stopped 84 vehicles, I'm sorry, we stopped, yeah, 84 vehicles this month. Out of 84 vehicles, we wrote 41 citations. That's up from last month. Last month, we hit 66. The reason being, we've had several concerns about Summerfield Road, speeding on Summerfield Road, had several concerns about speeding on North Bluff, believe it or not, and some other things. So we, you know, ramped up the patrol in those areas, so obviously citations and warnings did go up. Total number of calls actually went drastically down, which is really great to hear, but it's to people on vacation or whatever. So last month, it was 180. The month prior to that was 250. So a lot of that is because either people on vacation or people decided not break the law, so, or whatever the case may be. So, which is, which is good for us here in Mont Eagle, right? And the total number of crashes keep going down. I don't know if you guys can remember, God, a year ago, we were, we were averaging about 25 crashes a month here in Mont Eagle. Most of those were due at the pilot. We're down to six. Last month, we had six. The month before that, we had eight. So a lot of that's just going to be patrolling, the constant patrolling. So I'm very pleased with that. Now, we're going to circle back up to theft. I'm going to pass this around. If you can pass this around, everyone. This is a person of interest. If you guys know who this is, or if it's a family member, please report them, because last month I had three thefts. This month, from the 15th till last night, I've had five more. So I've got a total of eight thefts. So we're thinking it's the same individual. Unfortunately, unfortunately, this person's not a resident. This is a transient, I guess one would say. So trying to make contact with this person, and the reason I know that he's a person of interest is because the two items he's holding in his hand were recovered. So left it at another scene where he was burglarizing. So I'm going to pass that around. So hopefully, we can catch this individual and stop, you know, him from breaking into someone else's home, because I'd much rather see him behind bars as opposed to getting shot.
And the broken two broke together, or they spread apart?
They're spread apart. Spread apart.
It's a little hard to...
That's the, that's the best. It's a white male subject, probably about 5'10", maybe 5'11", probably 180 pounds, dark hair, so short, I'll hear.
Mid-20s.
Mid-20s, early 30s, if I had to take a guess. So go ahead, sir.
Chief, someone broke into a house at the corner of West and Church Street there. I don't know if they turned it in or not, but...
We have not, actually, no.
Okay, so they knocked, I think three windows out, getting in it, and they went in, they stayed in there, but we don't know how long.
Okay, when was the last time you were in that, resident?
I wasn't in there, but I talked to a couple people, Richard Park, more people than her the other day, and I think that they said that they had stayed in there, but I'm not sure how long. I didn't go in there and look for anything.
Well, we might want to get with the resident and maybe go in and see if the individual's currently residing there.
The house, there's no furniture, there's nothing in the house. I think they're just looking for somewhere to stay.
That's, that's what we're thinking as well, stealing things to maybe sell or whatnot. But larceny is going up, unfortunately. Just to piggyback on, you know, what several people are saying here, times are getting hard. You know, groceries are getting expensive, people are getting laid off, so people are going to resort to, unfortunately, stealing. That's why I asked the people of town to watch out for each other continually, you know, be our brother's keeper, like this town is really good at doing, believe it or not. I'm not a resident here, but I do enjoy coming to Mont Eagle, and the, the people of Mont Eagle are some of the greatest people that I have had the pleasure of meeting. So we may not always get along, but you guys do come together. So, but as far as that goes, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Any aldermen have questions? Chief Franklin?
The two guests at the trucks, at the arrest...
Okay, so those, not going to get into great detail. The county did work that, we assisted. They were, one was a suicide, well, one was a suicide, obviously. And I think, I want to say the other one was an overdose, so I'm not really sure, but not really going to go into great detail about that. So you can reach out to the county if they want to give out information on it, so...
You don't think as citizens we're at risk, whatever?
You are, you are not. If you were, then I would definitely let you know. I can tell you that you're not, no, ma'am.
Do tasers get ordered, or are they coming?
They did, they got ordered. We should, hopefully, God willing, we'll have them the first week of December. They're on back order, obviously, everyone's going for tasers, so we should have those the first week of December. So thank you for asking.
Alderman, any other questions? Thank you, chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Good evening. Making the front door appearance there. That's exactly right. It's like the pool hall. So in the Fire Department, we ran 42 emergency calls for the month of September. All of the specs and procurements for our CBDG grant, for all the equipment, they've been submitted to SETD. I think we're still waiting on the, the truck. I'm dealing with them back and forth with email, but other than that, we're waiting for the next step, and hopefully they'll release the funding for all of it, so that's a plus. I've got two commercial interstate claims that's been submitted through Fire Recovery totaling $4,148 for Fire Department reimbursement, and there's a third claim on the back burner for that being processed. Members continue to work on their monthly trainings. I've got three members currently attending the state rookie class, along with the 16-hour intro and the 64-hour basic. We was on cutback and lockdown. We've used 2,500 gallons of water for the month since we were in a kind of a drought condition, so we kind of cut back on training and water flows. That's a rough overview of Fire Department. Anything y'all want to...
Alderman, any questions of Fire Chief?
Yeah, Travis, I'm curious about the interstate claims. Out of how many interstate claims would you say these three represent? So I'm trying to get a sense of what percentage of the interstate claims...
Anything commercial tractor-trailer. So I think there were four in total, all those, the fourth one's laying on my desk right now, being submitted. That was ran Saturday. So anything commercial, insured, commercial freighter, or commercial entity, I submitted.
So we're not submitting for interstate calls that involve PKBs?
Citizen. No. Just anything commercial.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief. You want to move to building?
Yeah, I want to touch, too, on the Fire Department side. Let me introduce to you Tim Prater. So I mentioned last month about starting the EMR program and first responder program with Grand EMS and kind of running hand-in-hand with them. So that's a continued thing. I've been down with Stacy and Dawn, trying to get the first responder thing off the ground. I wanted to introduce everybody to Tim Prater. Tim's a critical care medic for Grand EMS. He works down at Swanee Station, and Tim will actually be the oversight and the proctor for the program within the Fire Department. This will run hand-in-hand with Grand EMS and kind of allow us to work as a subsidiary of Grand EMS under Dawn's protocol, under EMS protocol and stuff like that. And Tim kind of audits, an internal auditor, if you will, as well as our trainer that's pushing the program for all of our guys and, and, you know, putting the ball into motion and putting it on the streets for us. So now we're, next step, we've got the CPR, we've had a CPR class, and we've gotten several guys certified in CPR. CPR between Mont Eagle and Tracy, I think it was a joint thing. So now we'll work towards, Tim's going to get his EMR certification to teach the class, and then we'll start pushing a couple guys into the EMR program. So any questions anybody has for that?
Very good. Additional, additional protection.
So this will put us running pretty well all medical-related calls in the Mont Eagle District. You know, just another service to offer, and I know, you know, of course, more likely to respond, but at the same time, I think it's a better service to our community, especially our elderly and, and autonomy.
Do you have any related insurance?
We do. Actually, I just bought two, and I just done an upgrade on mine. Every, every two years, you have to do a, just kind of a refurb on them. So new pads and new batteries and stuff, so yeah. There's three of them going there, and I'm actually building the stuff to build two first-response kits. One will go on my personal, or my city Tahoe, the other one will go on the frontline engine, and that's what we'll run medical calls off of.
Okay. You have anything on building?
Yep, so building inspections...
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate you.
Building inspections report, there's five inspections that's been done. There's two certs of occupants that I've issued for commercial. There's two cert, or two commercial permits that's been issued, as well as two residential permits. I think there's also one commercial that we're working on reviews for a lift station on a commercial property, trying to get the reports back for it and the, and the quantities going into that, but that's where we're at with building.
Okay.
And codes?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I'm, I'll do codes. The codes enforcement, there's two prior property maintenance issues that's been resolved. Working on compliance articles with two food trucks in town. This is an ongoing issue that we're trying to seek remediation with. So, you know, to kind of, one of your citizen comments chopped on the food truck, so that food truck comment, you know, there's, there's been several people ask, you know, are they compliant, are they not compliant? If you look at a lot of things in Mont Eagle, we're not compliant, but I think the best bet to say on a professional level is common sense goes a long way, and I'd rather help somebody with remediation and getting compliance, so it's a positive, you know, positive effect to our community versus something that's breaking the rules and regs. So if, if, working with the food trucks. I know there's a problem there, and we're trying to figure it out.
Any questions from the alderman?
Does your work with the food trucks, have you been able to get any insight on the sales tax issue, where the sales tax is going for the, for the two food trucks in question?
Not, no, just other than reviewing the TCA codes and understanding the way it goes back into the community and filters down, I don't know. That's a, a dark answer right now for that.
That's, I mean, I like having them here, but that's the only concern with them.
Well, that's my problem. I mean, a lot of the community, just looking at the community, those, those places are, obviously, you know, the two that I'm, that I'm talking about without calling names, they're, they're, I mean, the community attends to them. There's lots of lines waiting at those two food trucks. So, you know, not just looking at it from a revenueable source, I think that the community enjoys them being here because they go to them, and, and I think that's an access for, or an asset for our community to have those amenities here if that's what they so desire. So I just want to try to make it work for them.
Okay.
Just, just so it's clear, all food trucks have to pay sales tax?
Yes, that's right.
They just pay sales tax in their home location, and so we are having a conversation about, okay, well, if we have ones that are set up in a semi-permanent manner, then maybe it makes sense for them to pay their sales tax here rather than there. It's not a matter of trying to tax anybody out, they're paying the tax.
That's right.
It's just that we're providing the services and not getting the sales tax from them.
That's right.
Okay. Anything else?
I know. You know, most importantly, I just want to tell everybody that, you know, I hope to push towards fair enforcement, meaning, you know, what makes... push towards fair enforcement, meaning, you know, what makes sense and what the code says is what we're trying to enforce, but I want to be fair, if there's two sitting there, I want to treat both of them identically alike. If one can't be here, then the other one can't be here either. I want to make sure that it's fair, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Parks and Recreation, no report at this time? Okay, thank you. Utility Manager, John, you have anything?
No, not really, but I've got these reports reserved.
Well, submit those. I have a couple of things that I need to submit at this time, probably. Thank you.
Better than I looked like that next one.
Better than? Okay. Any questions of John on the utility matters? Okay. I have two things that need your attention, and I accept a motion on each. First, you have in your packet the requirements necessary to rehabilitate the sediment basins at the water plant. There was only the one bid received. It's important that we do this sooner rather than later, as you all know, so I'll accept a motion to accept the recommendation of award for the sediment basin rehabilitation project.
I'll make a motion on the settlement basin restoration project.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'm seconding.
Thank you, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. The next matter, you have received a copy of the task force, which is required from a previous consent order that goes back several years. This is part of the TDEC requirement to review and report various readings from the sewer plant and its affluent, and influence, probably. So, I need a motion to accept that task force as presented.
Move to approve task order with LGA to review the test for phosphorus levels.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion or questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll advise the engineer and TDEC that we've taken appropriate action, so thank you for that. Street Department had no report. Planning Commission, I think we'll get a better idea of everything tomorrow night. The ordinances were prepared and sent to us for consideration, and we'll continue to research that. Unless someone has a Planning Commission comment? Okay. Next is beautification and the tree board.
We're in a lot of waiting mode right now. We're waiting to hear from the tourism grant that Jessica did. We're hoping that's going to help us with lights and electricity. The tree board, Nate got a grant request out to replace dead and dying trees, and do you know when we should hear about that?
We should hear something in the next 30 days, I think.
Okay. We're going to hold off getting the gazebo until next spring, so that it doesn't have a winter of wear, and have it ready for Easter when we'll have the kids out here. And the last thing is, we are going to have Christmas lights on a tree trail that is going to go out here, and we're going to connect it to a scavenger hunt, where families can come out and they pick up at the library a list of ornaments, an ornament on each tree, and they designate the tree, hand it in, and there will be a $25 prize drawing from the box of someone who finished the whole thing. And those, there will be, we're asking 20 businesses, schools, churches, individuals, nonprofits, 20 to decorate the trees for this first year, and we will have a $100 prize for the best decorated tree. And I'm going to give you all the details. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
Look, we do need volunteers, anyone who's interested in getting involved in the Imagine Montegoal project, we need a lot of volunteers.
Any questions from the alderman to Martha Anne? Martha Anne, let me say, it's volunteers, and that's part of community involvement, and I hope that many respond to your request. It's not an easy task, you've done a lot of research to make it an effective program, and I just hope the community meets you with this, so thank you for all that you do.
Can I give a specific thanks to you as well? I logged on to the state portal last Friday to start thinking about this grant, and when I logged on, I realized the grant was due that day at 5:00. Martha was able to turn around a quick letter of support, Debbie was able to get me a lot of information in a short period of time, and Keith, who's not here tonight, also took a lot of my calls. We matched this grant all with in-kind labor rather than try to do a cash outlay, so Keith helped me put the buckets together, but we turned it around in about five hours, which was not what I wanted to do that Friday.
Imagine Montegoal.
So, we had a public meeting on last Monday where we looked at the Imagine Montegoal report, and we took comments on it. Two, a lot of the comments that have been said today, one, I think, the concerns about the way planning and zoning is currently operating in the town of Montegoal is that we don't really have a guiding vision of where we want to go, and so some of our decisions, lacking that vision, it's hard to understand where some of the decisions are coming from. So, we had a good meeting last Monday, there was a lot of feedback, it was a packed room, and so I was excited to see it. For those of you who are not, who haven't had a chance to look at the report, we do have some printed copies that are available at City Hall, we've got more printed copies coming soon. It is not a prescriptive document, so to, you know, Dean's comments from earlier, it does not stipulate when a store is going to be open or what a store size looks like. It talks in broad brush about things that people in Montegoal have said is important for Montegoal. So, the reason that's important is because it gives us an idea of where we want to go and can help frame the conversation about specific ordinances and about specific regulations in the town, which I think will help us make better decisions. One of the things that they recommended is that we do have a comprehensive review of our planning and zoning ordinance to see what parts make sense, what parts don't. In particular, they wanted us to look at our current zoning designations, because we've spent a lot of time in the Planning Commission and also at the City Council, trying to think about what goes where and what makes sense where without having sort of, really, I think, a holistic view of what the implications are of that. So, and as I said at the public meeting on Monday, the importance of this document is about giving us a guiding vision, but it's also about helping us get resources and get grants that are going to help us move forward with the specifics. So, to that end, I had a first conversation with a planning group out of Atlanta that's interested in talking to us about our zoning ordinance. They've reviewed it, they said they agree that we needed a full review and a critique of that zoning ordinance, and they wanted to help us make specific recommendations about the ordinance itself, and particularly about our zoning districts, which again, we've spent a lot of time doing. There is a funder interested in helping with that, so tomorrow evening, I worked with this group, we're going to put this out to bid if it's something that the Planning Commission is interested in, and I think they probably are. But this planning group was helpful in helping me understand what the right questions are to go into a request for proposals. So, tomorrow at the Planning Commission, they're going to see a draft of a request for proposals for a firm that can help our Planning Commission maybe hone in and try to clean up the zoning ordinance. And that's an example, that funding is becoming available because of this document. So, in light of, we've been talking about what the next steps are for this document, and in light of the public meeting last Monday, which I think was very positive, and like I said, very well attended, in light of the number of attendees that we had at our events and subsequent comments about the plan, I would like to propose a resolution tonight that we adopt this Imagine Montegoal plan as a guiding document. Again, it's not a prescriptive document, it doesn't change any policy, but it simply puts us on record as saying, we think this has some value, and that's important, because I think it helps us understand a clearer vision of where to go, but again, it's also important to help with grants and funding, both private and state and federal funding.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'm seconding.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Any questions or comments of Nate and the process? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Coming up on Old Business is the second reading of the ordinances we discussed at the public hearing. I would ask for the alderman's guidance if you want to consider them, or refer them back, or consider them and with the ability to refine them in conversation with the Planning Commission. So, under Old Business, the second reading of ordinance number 15-24, which was the site plan review. Is there a motion to accept that ordinance on the second reading?
I think it's.
I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
We've got a formatting issue. I had it here in the public meeting, I think it's down, I think it's again down at the bottom, so I'm sorry, I'm trying to get it up on the screen.
Oh.
There's a copy of it with formatting issues, but I think there's a clear copy of it down below. We were looking at it. Yeah, this is just a bunch of formatting errors in it, but I guess that's what we've got. That's a convenience store.
16.
Over for 15-24.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the alderman on the second reading of ordinance 15-24, the site plan review? Is there a motion to accept that on the second reading?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? Not hearing a second? The motion is... Let me put this in English. The motion was not approved due to a lack of a second, therefore, there's no action taken on ordinance 15-24 at this time.
Can I ask a question about?
Yeah.
Let me make the motion just to ask a question, because Dean and I had talked about this, and I was under the impression that it was only a preliminary site review that was required, and it doesn't actually say that.
What is?
Because a preliminary site review is not going to cost thousands of dollars. It will cost something, but I think that the concern that it's too onerous is real. We have, because Dean and I talked about this about his property, and you've done a preliminary site review for the BZA review, is that correct for that, for the upcoming?
No, I submitted a request for the BZA to hear a special exception.
Oh, that's right, because we don't have it, this ordinance is not in place. Yeah. Yeah, so I think at a minimum, we need to stipulate what goes in here, because it's true that nobody's going to do a full site plan for a property that they don't have, that they're looking for a special exception on. I think the idea, and I wasn't at the meeting, and that's why I'm looking to you guys on what the idea behind it was, I thought the idea was just that the BZA wouldn't have nothing to...
Well, that's what I tried to state in my comment. It's more for communication, not for choking. It's more for when BZA gets something, they know what they're talking about. What we have done traditionally, setting all of this aside for a moment, we've sent all requests to Southeast Tennessee Development, to the planner, to discuss these types of issues before any money is spent, so the first stop would be to go to the planner to see what are required, what the processes are, if any needed, and that's where this came from. It was to communicate to the BZA what the site plan was, so I suspect once it cleared the Planning Commission, it would have been sent to BZA. That's how I understood it.
You know, I'm on the Planning Commission, and we haven't received any...
You're on the Planning Commission or BZA?
I'm on the BZA, I'm not on the Planning Commission.
Right.
We have not received any use upon reviews for actual site use other than, that I can think of, other than the signs, the signage that Andy brought in, and Andy brought us in descriptions and something which would have been equivalent to a preliminary site plan. So, I guess my question is, does this actually change any requirements? Would the BZA not have to see some sort of preliminary site plan anyway?
That was the thought.
So, this doesn't change the requirements, it simply gives the Planning Commission the opportunity to see it first.
There's a large effort to try to clarify some of these things that had not been addressed previously, and that's not blaming anyone, but as things come up and plans develop, then it's time for additional guidance or review, or whatever the word is, so, Nate, in my opinion, you're right, I don't think it changes anything, I think it's a communication effort to show BZA what we're talking about when it comes to special exception.
Well, it adds a flaming hoop in the form of an additional review, and so I just want to know what the Planning Commission was trying to get out of that. Were they trying to be able to let the BZA know what they were thinking about it?
Well, that and showing them the site plan would be exactly that. Here's the site plan that we have, what do you want to do with it? That's how I understood the concept.
Whereas, the way the zoning ordinance is currently laid out, that site plan would go directly to BZA without going to the Planning Commission.
I think so.
Okay. Well, it's a...
Well, that's a discussion, yeah, because it died for lack of a second, I'll ask for reconsideration. Nate made a motion, if there is no second, we will move on. There's been discussion outside the motion. Does anyone have a second? Okay, then there dies for lack of a second. Next item is second reading of ordinance 16-24, removal of convenience store from C1 and other requirements. Is there a motion to accept on the second reading of ordinance 16-24?
Move to accept.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm seconding.
All right, discussion on the motion. You've heard the comments, if there's anything you'd like to address, fine, if not, we can move to vote.
Well, again, I just want to address Dean's comments, because I think that there is some real validity to those concerns. Now, this in particular, and I don't know where, what the Planning Commission was, where they were thinking about with this SKUs and the typings, but did these, these apply only to a store that would call itself a convenience store? And so my understanding is that this would not put the same limitations on a store that would not try to call itself a convenience store. I think it gets to the point that we just, we need, we need to understand where we're going to go to be able to have a better sense of where these are.
on Monday, that I hope their recommendations will be to make this all make more sense. I'm willing to support it in deference to the Planning Commission at this time, but I don't understand where a lot of this is coming from, and so...
Part of it...
Southeast development.
If I can add to that, Southeast Development presented different arguments as to definition of a convenience store versus retail versus commercial, and what this tries to do is refine it. I think we've all agreed that we don't want that type of operation in C1 as we try to develop the downtown business district through Imagine Mont Eagle. If there is something that needs tweaking, we can tweak it if, once it's passed. We can always amend it. But the thought was, what is a convenience store? As I've said in past meetings, people go to motorhome parks, and there's a convenience store for them to buy things till they go shopping the next day. There are convenience stores, we said, that are associated with gas stations and not associated with gas stations. So, the conversation at that time was, again, definition vis-à-vis convenience store, commercial, retail, what was what. So, this was an attempt to define that a little bit.
It doesn't seem to tie it to gas stations.
No, that's right. I'm just saying, those are the various convenience store discussions we've had. So, what we wanted to do was say, not in C1, and if you do do it, it's not just a drive-through kind of thing, or whatever. So, that's it there. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Dean, I'll allow it only to discuss this motion.
I'm just going to give you the information. Oh, Tennessee, tn.gov says each taxpayer or business is classified by its dominant business activity, parentheses, the activity that produces its largest portion of taxable sales on a per-location basis.
Okay.
That's tn.gov.
So, to that point, a convenience store that sold gas would likely be a gas station, because they would be selling more gas.
But now, Southeast Tennessee Development probably isn't going to agree with that.
Any other discussion on the motion? Oh, Lucy?
I just want to say that in section two, add, under B, go down to five. It says the product mix of SKUs includes brochure-type items and also includes items from the following groups, beverages, snacks, including vexingary, tobacco, and fuel.
Oh, okay.
So, I just want to point that out. So, gas is included in the list.
The point of my comment with that is, some people associated convenience stores only with the gas station operation. We were trying to say, you don't need a gas station. You can have a convenience store to sell certain items. So, we tried to define the certain items before we got into supermarkets or Walmarts or whatever. I was the one that specifically asked the question when this came up of Dollar General, is this going to be like the grocery store in Tracy City? And the answer was no, at that meeting by those people. So, be that as it may, let's move on. Is there any further discussion from the Alderman? Okay, there's a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, let me do a vote.
Jessica?
Yes.
Right?
No.
Right?
Yes. And let me say, and I think Lucy made the point before, whatever any council does can be amended, deleted, refined. This is not a final version. If there's input, please attend the meeting tomorrow night with the Planning Commission, and we'll continue to refine things as we go and grow. I would like to see it in concert with Imagine Mont Eagle, because what did we do all that for, if we're not working towards some kind of goal?
Well, yeah, just to add, so my conversation with the planning group on, when was it? That was last Friday. No, no, what I meant with a draft, with a planning group that's interested in helping us with the next steps, one of the things that they said that we were right to do is spend some time with the Planning Commission, looking at each of our zoning districts, and they were, and what's going to be included in this RFP, is an idea that we just spend a whole lot of time looking at each zoning district and what we want to get out of it, and let that determine what those uses are. And what they said is that there are a lot of good models out there, so it's not as though we have to reinvent the wheel, but it might be that in this conversation going forward, our idea of C1 changes. We had talked a lot about where our map is good and where our map is not good and where our map needs changes, and they were able to really help me understand that the map may need some work, but first you've got to get your districts right. And if you don't have your districts and you don't have everybody agreeing on what that district is supposed to represent, you will always have these conflicts. So, again, my hope is that we sooner rather than later have this conversation that may in fact change some of this stuff that we just voted on.
Also, I think it's fair to say, there was a lot of input and requests and reaction from the audience when we talked about zoning and ordinances. So, I think the community or those that were in attendance is looking forward to that kind of discussion, and that's why I think anything can be amended or changed. But we have to start somewhere to get to where we want to go, and if there's an issue with something, then we should revisit it. But in keeping with the agenda, the second reading of ordinance 17-24, is there a motion to accept that? That concerns the building permits.
I move to approve on second reading.
Is there a second to that motion?
On second.
Is there discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, first reading of ordinance 18-24 to rezone the Highway 41, C2 to R3. C2, as you know, is a commercial zone. R3 is high-density residential.
I make a motion to accept the ordinance 18-24 on the first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion as a first reading of ordinance 18-24? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is approved on the first reading. We'll revisit that. First reading of ordinance 19-24, campgrounds is a special exception. An ordinance to amend section 501 of the Mont Eagle zoning ordinance to make campgrounds to be used by special exception approval required by the Board of Zoning Appeals in the C2 Highway Commercial District and C3 in the Interchange Commercial District. So, this is a review for Zone C2 and C3 for campgrounds. Is there a motion to accept on the first reading, ordinance 19-24?
I move to accept ordinance 19-24.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, yeah. There again, this is a first reading. There'll be a public hearing on that, and of course, we certainly want to review that. But keep in mind, as they say, Imagine Mont Eagle, what do you want to see where? I don't think we need a campground in the middle of C1, but maybe what's available to the motoring public that may want a campground near an interstate exit, maybe around 135, maybe in some other areas that are, would be on a refined map as we work through this. So, please keep in mind, this is not etched in stone, but it should be ongoing conversation and review from the citizens. That was one of my comments, I believe, during my campaign, that we wanted community input, be it volunteers or any other kind of input a citizen may have. Okay, on the, under new business, the last item, business permit. We have a business and vendor permit application, Diamond Images Spa. Is someone here to speak to that? Joseph and Audrey Meeks? Oh, okay. Tell us a little bit about what you have in mind.
Well, I'm a multi-licensed esthetician. I am licensed here in Tennessee and in Florida, and Mont Eagle is basically the nearest, biggest town to me, because I don't live here in Mont Eagle. I live actually in Grotonly. And I want to bring to Mont Eagle what the other spa does not offer. The other spa here in Mont Eagle offers botox. I do not, because that's a med spa, and I want to be able to bring something to watch Mont Eagle grow by not providing botox, but other services that I can provide as an esthetician.
And this is just me, because I don't know your business. Are there any restrictions or licenses or permits that you get from any agency?
You have to be state licensed, so we will have cosmetologists and L-Techs, and for as an esthetician, you've got to have a license for each state.
Okay, and any health department regulations or anything?
Yes.
I'm asking because I don't know.
They have to inspect it 10 days before we open.
That's right.
Now, who does that inspection?
The state health inspection.
State health?
Or Lord of Cosmetology.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions from the Alderman about the business permit?
Where's the location?
1601 South Main Street, right next to Clifton's.
Yeah.
Oh, there with where the van used to be.
Yeah.
Oh, and those four, as you go in the Clifton's entrance to the right, those four offices?
Yeah, we're in the center one.
In the center one, where all creatures, I think, used to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to approve the business license for, I'm sorry, what's the name? I was trying to...
The Diamond Image.
The Diamond Image.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. When they're done, we get that back. Okay. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.